I'd like to welcome everyone out this evening for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. So we were to have a great meeting prior to this workshop to recognize our police department with some penings and promotional ceremonies as well as special presentations for patriotic employer awards, and we're grateful to be able to recognize those employees and for one of our police officers to want to recognize those employees. So we're grateful for that. So we will get, as mentioned, this is our regularly scheduled city council meeting. It is June 2nd, 2025, and it is just after 6:00 PM. We will begin this meeting with an invocation offered by Pastor Rob Kinzinger of the Montana Avenue Baptist Church. So if you please come forward, we appreciate that. So if everyone please stand for the prayer and then remain standing after for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. My name is Rod Grubb. I'm representing Montana Avenue Baptist Church and my pastor, Rob Kinzinger, tonight. He couldn't be here. So thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, staff, assembled citizens. And again, I'm representing Montana Avenue Baptist Church in this important invocation prayer. By definition and the purpose of an invocation prayer is that it's a special prayer offered at the beginning of meetings to call upon God for His presence, guidance, and blessings. Let us now acknowledge and seek to honor the Lord regarding the agenda being considered by our elected leaders here tonight. Let's go ahead and go to the Lord in prayer. Lord, we gather here to invoke your presence. We beseech thee for thy guidance and your blessings upon these proceedings this evening. Lord, in a similar manner, the Apostle Paul during his evangelistic missionary journeys throughout the Roman Empire continually invoked the name of Jesus Christ prior to sharing the gospel. Lord, we read in 1 Corinthians 15, 3 and 4, "I delivered to you first of all that which I also received, that Christ died for our sins according to the scriptures, and that he was buried, and that he rose again the third day according to scriptures." Thank you, Lord, that we can trust you and your word. Lord, I lift up our mayor along with the members of the city council and those gathered here tonight for your wisdom, integrity, of purpose, and humility in the presence of our living God. May you, oh Lord, guide your elected officials toward righteous, well-deliberated decisions, those that achieve the best for our citizens and our community. Oh Lord, we pray that if there be any here tonight that do not know Jesus Christ as their Lord and Savior, that you would, that they would truly repent and place your eternal confidence in you, oh Lord, before it is forever too late. All this I pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for being here, for representing Montana Avenue Baptist Church. We appreciate that very much. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Doty?
Here.
Stoddick?
Here.
Register?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
All good?
Here.
Thank you so much. All council members are present and accounted for. Are there any conflict of interest declarations from any members of the council regarding an item on the agenda this evening? Okay, very good. And we do not have anybody signed up for audience participation. So before we do get to the consent calendar, I know that we do have an amendment or two to go on that. Want to recognize Christina, who is here with us, our future city clerk. So super excited. She's in the deputy clerk role at this time while Debbie continues to fulfill her duties as a city clerk until her retirement, but super excited to have her here and want to just recognize her. So the council approved her nomination a few weeks back, and we're just excited that she's here and putting her to work. So Dave's got her going already. So anyway, just want to recognize you and thank you for being here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sounds like there's two motions. So you want to do these one at a time?
I think we do it together.
You want them both at once?
Yep, we do.
Okay. We move item number nine from the consent calendar to new business for further discussion, and then continue old business items, one and two, to the regularly scheduled city council meeting to be held on August 18th, 2025, as requested by the applicant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So it's a motion from Councilor Doty and a second from Councilor Stoddick for amendments to the consent, or amendments to the agenda as described. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. So with that, the amended consent calendar is before the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Doty.
Make a motion to approve the amended consent calendar.
In a second?
Second.
It's a motion from Councilor Doty and a second from Councilor Stoddick for approval of the amended consent calendar. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, with that, then voting is open for that motion. And all votes are cast. The voting is closed, and that passes unanimously. So before we do move on, just for those that are here in attendance, so if you are here for what have been the old business, action item number one and number two, for the annexation and preliminary plat for High Pine Ridge subdivision, so that has been continued, and that'll be, that was continued to August 18th, so that the August 18th, 2025 city council meeting is when that will next be taken up for consideration. So just to save you the time of having to be here, so if you are here for that, apologize, but that will not be heard tonight. It'll be at the August 18th council meeting. Okay, so with that being moved, then we do not have any old business, and that'll move us straight into new business. So our first item under new business is a, for Vassar Heights subdivision, for preliminary plat approval consisting of 156 residential lots. So we'll turn the time over to Katie, is this you, or?
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. Katie Wright, Associate Planner, 205 South 6th Avenue. Before you tonight is Vassar Heights, SPP 2502. This was heard before the hearing examiner on April 22nd, where it was recommended for approval. Okay. The project location is 54.37 acre parcel located on the southeast corner of Lincoln Road and Middleton Road. The site has frontage along both Middleton and Lincoln Road. The project site's currently surrounded by undeveloped land in all directions, as well as residential to the west, some industrial to the north, and commercial to the south along the highway. There are five developments within a one-mile radius of the subject site that are either actively under construction or have been approved for entitlements. That application before you tonight is for a preliminary plat shown in red. And the subject site was annexed into the city of Caldwell in 2007 with a development agreement, instrument number 2007063450. There was no proposed development at the time, and this development would meet the planning and zoning conditions with the, in the original DA. There are several design standards within the DA for the future single-family homes that will be required at time of building permit. The property is zoned R1. The purpose of the R1 zone is to provide areas by zoning procedures in accordance with the comprehensive plan that preserves and enhances single-family residential neighborhoods at a low-density standard, which is consistent with the comp plan. Such zones should have a full range of urban services available or projected to be established. The proposed development is surrounded by low-density residential to the east and west with neighborhood commercial and medium-density residential to the west and semi-rural residential, one to the east and medium-density and highway corridor to the southeast. There's county land to the south and Middleton area of impact to the north currently within the county. Staff finds the R1 zone is a compatible zoning district next to other low-density residential zone, and this will be analyzed under the old code for when they applied. The comp plan place type is neighborhood two, and low-density residential is consistent with the intention of the comprehensive plan, and the proposed densities are in compliance with the comprehensive plan. The proposed land use is a single-family residential development, which is permitted within the R1 zone. The applicant's proposing a development consisting of 156 single-family homes on 54.37 acres with four acres of qualified open space. The proposed development has been analyzed for compliance with city codes and policies, and staff finds it's compliant with all landscaping and parking requirements, lot size, frontage, and height of buildings, and staff finds the development is in compliance with all other zoning and subdivision ordinances. The applicant is utilizing a code section that allows a reduction of 10% of the required lot size of the underlying zone, so long they meet density. This result, it results in no lots being less than 7,200 square feet now or at the time of final plat. The applicant's also requesting that an alternative method of compliance is used for the pathway along the lower five-mile drain. The applicant's requesting an eight-foot pathway with a total of 12 feet of maintained landscaping and eight feet of natural landscaping opposed to the 20 feet of maintained landscaping due to the large easement along the canal. The proposed development will have adequate site access, and all utilities are available or will be available as outlined in the engineering staff report. Public agencies were notified and asked to provide comments. The only agencies that had comments were Highway District 4 provided comments for the city to consider, and Valley View School District commented that this development will be going to the, a new elementary school, but there are concerns about the large number of projected homes in this area, and there were no public comments submitted at this time. Again, on April 22nd, the hearing examiner recommended the approval of this final plat. Staff recommends that if council approves the request, that such request is subject to the conditions specified in findings of facts, conclusions of law, and order of decision, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you so much. Council Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple quick questions. Katie, in your report, it seems to me you, staff had concerns about those lots being smaller simply because if there was a need to change later for any reason, that could put you at a disadvantage. Has that been resolved, or are you satisfied now, or do we still have that as a potential problem in the future if anything were to change?
So Mayor and counselor, with that, really what that would result them in having to do would just be getting rid of some buildable lots at time of final plat. So it's not necessarily a concern to us. It's more of a concern that on their end, they would have to get rid of buildable lots if engineering did require additional storm drain or anything at the time of final plat.
Perfect. And then one more, if I could, Mr. Mayor. I see Haley, at least it says Haley, sitting over there. Mr. McDonald, welcome to the party. Highway District 4 wants us to take over that road or that, some section of that road, that I believe was their comment. Do we have any problem with that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Williams, generally annually, we meet with Highway District 4, and that's where we look at road sections that have been generally annexed into the city, and so that would be decided at that time. Generally, if there's been annexation on both sides of road segments, we don't have any problem taking over roads, but what we have tried to do is take over full segments of road at one time, so we're not piecemealing maintenance obligations. So that is, we've received that request in several locations from Highway District 4, and that's something we would sort out in our next meeting with them.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilor Allgood?
Yeah, kind of along the lines of Council Williams, can you give us kind of a brief on if Lincoln Road and Middleton Road will have any intersection changes or improvements? At Middleton Road is so busy, based on this, this new development?
Yes, I can speak to that, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Allgood, we have been in a cooperative agreement with Middleton, the city of Middleton, and Highway District 4 to start design on a roundabout at Lincoln and Middleton. That project is already in design, and the city is overseeing the design of that. The vast majority of that project, design and construction, will be funded through Middleton's impact, impact fees, which include that intersection as part of their impact fees. But we are participating to some extent to help get a project off the ground at that location.
Perfect. Thank you. That's what I was asking.
Council Dittenberg?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. McDonald, I'm familiar with this area over there, and are we okay with sewer there? How are we getting sewer back to our sewer station from that location?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Dittenberg, I'm not exactly sure what the discussions have been with engineering. I can tell you what the overall plan is. We, the city is in the process now and have a design mostly complete for a major regional lift station that is going to be located on Lincoln Road, just to the west of this location. And as part of that project, there will be a gravity line from that lift station, basically pushing out all the way to Middleton Road. It is the intent that all of these developments that are kind of on the lower end, off the shelf there, to the east, will all serve back through this lift station. This lift station won't be online for a couple years, and so if this developer does not have, if this developer's not able to tie into that from a timing standpoint, then they will be obligated, obligated to build their own personal, private, basically lift station to be able to push sewer somewhere else to a location approved by the city. And then once the sewer is available down there, then that would be taken offline, and they would be able to tie into the system. And that's all a burden that they have to overcome, and that is something they would have to pay for.
You answered many questions, and I don't want to answer. Thank you.
Hi, Councilor Stoddick.
Mr. Mayor, Katie, on the Valley View School District, are there any contributions per door by this developer?
Mayor and counselor, there was nothing discussed between staff and the applicant regarding that. They may be able to touch on that a little bit more, but I was not made aware of any of that.
Okay. And there's a little notch there on the northwest corner, I guess, of that whole development. Somebody's at a farm, or somebody lived there, Middleton and Lincoln?
Mayor and counselor, I do believe that it is a house, based on the map. I am unsure if it's occupied at this time.
And I guess this is for Mr. McDonald. Rob, on the Highway District agreements, would we be responsible if that's approved from Middleton, I mean, excuse me, on Lincoln, from Middleton to where would we be responsible for it? Going east?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Stoddick, that is a good question. We probably, currently Lincoln is the Highway District 4's responsibility, east and west of Middleton. West, all the way to basically where Lincoln starts going up the hill into Caldwell. I don't know how the transition of Lincoln would look with discussions with them, but probably if we were looking at Middleton, it would probably be the section from Lincoln down to the highway. The city already maintains everything south of 2026, and so there would probably be a section to the north now that we have quite a bit of development up in that area that would be transferred to the city.
And does Middleton have any services close to the subdivision sewer watering, like the middle of the town of Middleton, you know?
Councilman Stoddick, I'm not aware that, of any services close to this area specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
And so with that, we will go into testimony by the applicant. Do we have the? Okay, very good. So we will begin with our testimony, and are you Robert? Oh.
Mr. Mayor, John Brecken, Brecken Land Design?
Very good. So let me see. So did you sign, did you sign up by chance?
Well, I did not. I didn't think I needed to because it was...
We'll get, we'll get you signed up when you're, when you're done. So on that. So if you, just if you could state your name and address, and then you'll have 10 minutes for your presentation.
John Brecken, 6661 North Glenwood Street in Garden City. I've, I'll kind of skip through some of these slides here because I, I think Katie covered it, but anyway. So this, this, there's some specs here on, on the development, but we can, we can always go back if, if you have any questions. Site location, zoning map, existing school sites. This was a letter from the school district. Emergency services locations. Here's the latest site plan. Might note, this, this is the, had been updated a little bit since P&amp;Z, because there were some comments we've been working with staff on, and so this is the latest and greatest, and reflects a few modifications, particularly to the southwest and the entrance. There is a, let's see, does this have a pointer? Yeah, there's a pointer on it. Originally, we, well, we, what we did between P&amp;Z and now is we changed the phasing of the project to be in line with city code, and as such, the main entrance is now on Lincoln Road, northeast, and that would be phase one. And then there's an entrance onto Middleton Road at the southwest, and that is to be a temporary entrance. And we extended a road to the south, and so now there are two stub roads to the property to the south, at which time the property to the south is developed, and that connection is made for, to allow for secondary connection. Then that connection to Middleton Road on the west will, will be removed. Other things, we touched up some of the frontage on Middleton Road and also on Lincoln to reflect the turn lanes and some of the road improvements that are there that will be required. Some additional numbers there speaks to the lot size. And there were some questions on, this might help just kind of clarify or add to the discussion on the utility connections. Water, you can see currently existing water main is in Middleton Road and comes up the western side there of the property, and the plan is to connect in to that and extend it to, or extend it through and to the new city well that is to the east of us, and that's the red, the red line that kind of wraps around and extends to the, to the new city well. And then on sewer, our plan is to install a temporary lift station at the northwest corner, and then that, you know, temporarily, it will, the sewer will be pumped up the hill and connected into the Mandalay Bay subdivision there to the south, and then at which time the, the future trunk line comes in on Lincoln Road, then that lift station will be taken offline and won't connect in to the trunk line, which is the, the yellow there. This is the sewer master plan for reference. There is a project underway right now to improve the Woodgate Lift Station. You see that kind of southwest there, and that improvement will allow us to, or allow the city to have capacity for this development. I've been working with staff, and the city, city's consultant on the sewer went through and verified that we, that capacity will be available. Just a little detail on the road frontage improvements. And this kind of shows the, the Middleton Road corridor plan, or maybe a previous version of it. There's a roundabout to go in at, at the intersection of Lincoln and Middleton, and then we're adjacent to that and be on the, the bottom side of this. I think the location of it's still kind of up in the air from last I heard. Here's our irrigation pump station location. We're planning to install that. And we have been in conversation with our neighbors to the south. They're currently in design, working on preliminary plat drawings, and the plan is to coordinate with them on the pump, the irrigation pump station and be able to maybe just do one instead of two separate ones. This just shows open space. And this detail, we added in here, too, it kind of speaks to the variance we're asking for on the pathway. You can see there, this, this is what we're, we'd like, or what we're proposing. The requirement is to have 10 feet of landscape, an eight-foot pathway, and another 10 feet of landscape on the other side. There's a really large easement there, 100, I think it's 100 feet wide easement. And between the, the top of the ditch, top of the bank, and the edge of that easement, there's about 30 feet that we're, want to stabilize with a seed mix. And, and so that would engulf or take about eight of that first 10 feet, and then we'd have an open vision fence on the easement line, and then a two-foot landscape area, the eight-foot pathway, and then the 10-foot landscape to the back of the landscape to the back of the lots on that, on that north side. Here's the, the phasing plan. And then these are just some slides on the amenities. And examples of, of the homes that we hope to build. Now stand for questions.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much, John. Appreciate that. Questions from council? Councilor Denton?
Mr. Mayor, John, thank you very much for the presentation. I think about five slides back, maybe six slides back, you showed a long linear plan with some traffic. Do you have right turn only out of your subdivisions and U-turn lanes built into the design?
Yes, it's, it is, the, the current design reflects all of those proposed improvements. On Middleton Road you're talking about?
Yeah, I think it's just a couple of slides back. I'll tell you when, right there.
Okay, yes. And so you can see there's a I'm not sure what you call that, dog bone turnaround there, a little bulb. And we do, we have that reflected on the plan. And, and then you can see there's no roadway connection considered there. And, and, and that's why that connection would be temporary. At some point it would go away.
Thank you.
You bet. Councilor Stodick?
Mr. Mayor. With the overcrowding we have in Valley View School District, what do you plan on doing to help solve that problem relative to more homes and more people, students?
Well, sir, I, I.
Or do the taxpayers get stuck with the bill again? While you're smiling all the way to the bank.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Stodick, I, I don't have a good answer for you there. As I understand, funding comes from the state. And a bond needs to be passed in order to build new schools. I think we, you know, that's the process that's in place at this time.
Have you talked to the Valley View School District Superintendent's Office at all about helping out?
I have not personally.
Would, would you?
I, I would be glad to do that.
Okay. I think that would be very helpful because we're, you know, we're trying to be good neighbors with our friends at Middleton also, the city of Middleton. And they're really concerned about the developments that go north of our, of our city limits. And usually what happens is that if they're close to the city of Middleton, they usually wind up in the Valley View School District anyhow. And, you know, by law, we can't demand that you donate so much money per door. But my goodness, if you're going to be a good neighbor and you want to develop like this, I would think at least you would consider it. The other question I had, are you a part of Vassar Farms by any chance Incorporated?
No.
No?
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Allgood, Councilor Register.
Yes, sir. I just, there, there was mentioned that there's a current residence on the property. Is that encompassed in your project or is that separated out? Or what's the situation with that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Allgood, let me go back to the, the plan there. You're talking about that little corner there, the northwest corner. That isn't, that's, that's, that's not ours. And I believe it's still zoned as commercial at this point. I'm, I'm not sure. And I don't think there's anybody living there, but I, I'm not 100% on that either.
But it's not anything in relation to your project?
No, sir.
Councilor Register?
I was going to wait, but then Councilor Stodick brought it up. With the schools, what their letter says is that they, since there's already 3,000 more homes already projected to be built in a 1.5 mile radius of that school. And then that does, also there's other homes that we know of that are going to be built and attending Valley View. Says that eight of nine of the elementary schools will be at capacity by 2029. So when Councilor Stodick asked you about it, you kind of shrugged your shoulders and said that we could just pass a bond. And when that happens, it gets put back on the taxpayer. And so when growth doesn't pay for itself and when we have to pass a bond for whatever it is, schools, medics, et cetera, then it's the taxpayer paying for growth, not growth paying for growth. So as I, I don't necessarily, I have a problem with single family homes. I drove out to the site today to take a look in person. And, you know, I can't find a whole lot wrong with it, but what bothers me is when somebody comes up and shrugs their shoulders and says, well, you can pass a bond. Like that's an automatic strike for me. So it'll be a no for me until we figure out in the city how much our services are strained, including the schools. Which hopefully one day we'll get all the numbers and we can go from there. But we don't have those, so we will, or at least I will just stand with that.
Any other questions? Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it, John. Thank you. Okay, so I do have two others sign up to testify in favor, or favor. Daniel and Robert, not sure if there's a specific order you wish to go in or forget. So if you could state your name for the record and address and then you'll have.
Sure, it's Robert Ryan Burnett, 1125 West Two Rivers Lane, Eagle, Idaho. Hi, Mayor, council members. I'm the developer on this project, worked with the family, Vassar Farms, for a long time. Subdivision is named after them. The park along the trail and river is going to be named after the, the other side of the family. Street names are named after grandkids. And it's a really important project. We do have a letter from City of Caldwell, December 11th, from Haley, who's not here, that this project is proportionately sharing with five other developments around it to upgrade the sewer. And that lift station plan that goes up into Mandalay Bay is actually, we're, the city is contributing $400,000 to that, and we're contributing about a million two to upgrade that system. The existing lift station and a new eight inch pressurized line that's 3,785 cubic feet going down to the main trunk line on Schindon. That is Black Rock Homes, Winco, Legacy Farms, which is Brighton. So all of these are kind of integrated to help. I did talk to the superintendent, Diana, so just to give, give you a peace of mind, we are going to donate, and he asked for $500 a lot. You know, at building permits to be pulled and given to the school district. So we've tried to work with the community like we do in most of the areas that at least I'm involved in. And make sure we're solving and working with the cities. Your staff has been amazing. Haley was amazing to orchestrate five developers to work together on this to solve problems for the city and all of us. And we're more than happy to, to pay our fair share to bring new housing to Caldwell. And I think it'll be amazing product. It's got a huge bluff line. You'll notice that those lots I made a lot bigger because I think it's going to look over the whole river valley. And a lot of work and time went into it, and I appreciate your time. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, was that $500 a lot or $500 a door?
The lots are single family, so the doors should match the lots. It would be probably per door because if we do have to eliminate lots for seepage beds, obviously those aren't valuable. So it would be a door.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And then Daniel. So if you could just state your name and address as well, then you'll have three minutes.
Daniel Wallace, 24766 Old Highway 30. Let me start by saying I have no interest in this project by any means, but I just, I know Mr. Burnett very well. And council member Stodick talked about being a good neighbor, and that's this gentleman, okay? If he, if anybody can do it and be a part of the community, it's him. He's always kept his word with me. I've known him for almost eight years. And so I'm just here to kind of testify to his character. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate you taking the time to be here. And that is everyone that has signed up. There's nobody that has signed up in neutral or opposition. So with that, I would stand for a motion to close public testimony portion of this hearing. And a second. So it's a motion from Councilor Doughty and a second from Councilor Stodick. All is in favor, say aye. Very good. That motion passes. So this now turns over to the hands of the council. Staff is always available for questions if you do have additional questions regarding anything in that matter. And any discussion and, and any motions. So the time is yours.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes, Councilor Doughty, yes.
Based on the findings, effects, and conclusions of law, the city of Caldwell hereby orders that case number SPP 25-02, a request for preliminary plot approval is approved with the conditions outlined within the staff report.
Second.
First, a motion from Councilor Doughty and a second from Councilor Denton for approval of the requested, let me just get this right. So that's SPP 25-2, and this is for the Vassar Heights subdivision. So we do have a motion for approval with a second. So discussion on that motion. Councilor Allgood.
I just wanted to bring up a brief, in our workshop, we swore in five new officers and, and had, and promoted two more. And what, 90% of those people were from out of state? I mean, that's kind of the reason we're building houses, I guess, is because the police department is not unique in that, but you know, however you feel about it, people are coming here to flee these other places and, and live a quality life that we have. And I think the police department is a good representation of what's happening in our area. People are coming here and they need a place to live and they, and they love our community. And anyway, I think that's probably a good thing.
Councilor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to congratulate you on a really fine project. I appreciate the work that's gone into this. It is complicated, but it's a great area to build in. We've got the highway being improved. We've got commercial and retail coming in there. We do have people living here that need places to live, and I'm happy to see the project. So thank you for your hard work.
Any other discussion on that motion? Okay, so I do not see any. So with that, again, the motion is for approval of the requested subdivision for Vassar Heights. So that voting is open. And all votes are cast, so voting is closed. And that motion does pass with four in favor and two in opposition. So for those that are home that maybe cannot see that, Councilor Stodick and Councilor Register did vote against the motion, and the other four council members did vote in favor. So again, that does pass. So that does approve that project. So thank you for being here to present that, and that closes that item. So that, we are actually now going to move into the item that was removed from the consent calendar. So this is, was item number nine from the consent calendar. Does move to new business. What's that? Yeah, so we're going to do, we'll do this one first, and then we'll move into that parking ordinance. So this is, again, the Roger Brooks memorandum of understanding with the Caldwell Chamber of Commerce with the, in the amount of $115,000 provided by the city for that item. So Rayland will have a quick presentation on that, and I'll get some questions.
So this item is before you because we have worked with the chamber who is going to bring in Roger Brooks to do a downtown master plan that the city would have access to. I know that the MOU has been signed off by the chamber board, by our city attorney, by our planning and zoning director, as well as finance. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Very good. Councilor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rayland, appreciate your work as usual. This time of year especially, as you are burning the candle at both ends, working through finances. My, my question really goes to finances because we are wanting to be transparent. And I think for transparency, it's really important for everybody to understand where are we getting $115,000 from? Especially at a time where we have a lot of different demands and we're asking a lot of our departments to cut right now some things that they would consider essential. So would you tell us where this $115,000 is coming from?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So when this proposal was brought up, I did talk to several different directors. And they looked within their budget. So we're not adding to the budget. We're looking within current budgets to see where funding is available and what other things maybe items came in less than budgeted or were just choosing not to order something to do this project instead. So the first $50,000 is coming from planning and zoning. This was budgeted for a downtown master plan, which is exactly what this is. So $30,000 is coming from the general fund. Last year, we had a firework show that had a little bit of an issue, and so we received a refund of that. Or not a refund, we received, we did not pay the full amount for our firework show last year. And so that PO is still outstanding within the fireworks. So we had $30,000 available within the general fund. And so it was set aside for a bigger firework show, but even with asking for the bigger firework show, it still came in at available budget, less than that amount. So we do have that $30,000 available. $5,000 is coming from economic development within theirs due to some savings that they had under their dues and association fees. $10,000 is coming from public works engineering. And so that $10,000 is slated every year within engineering and public works for a project that they designate. Sometimes it's an overage. Sometimes it's just a special project like this that comes up. And so this is something that they decided to use that $10,000 from. And then last, $20,000 is coming from the parks budget, specifically the winter wonderland budget. Instead of adding to additional decorations this year, we decided the downtown master plan was more of a priority for winter wonderland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just, I think it's interesting, interesting is probably not the right word, but and I know some of the people involved in this project would have this same concern if this was anything else we were doing in the city. And we are able to pull money together that wasn't really the intention of what city council budgeted for Parks and Rec for. If Parks and Rec is over budgeted, why are we cutting training from the fire and police department? If, if Parks and Rec is over budgeted, or if one of these other funds is over budgeted, why are we telling the economic development department that they can't do some of the things that they are reliant on? My concern is, who, when do we stop just pulling money in from other places indiscriminately when we have a desire to do something that wasn't part of our budget discussions? And that's, that's what my heartburn is about this here. And I just think it's important that everybody understands where this is coming from.
Any other questions, sir?
I, I, that is a question.
Oh, so say it one more time.
I, I, I want to know, what are the, what are the, what's the guidelines for us to pull money from other places, other departments discriminately, so that we can come up with these type projects?
So is that a question for the other council members or for Rayland?
So it's a council decision, but where did the action come from to get this money from, from Parks and Rec? Who said, who said go to Parks and Rec? They're over budgeted.
So when a project like this comes forward and I'm asked, where can we find the money for this? My first inclination is not contingency and is not using fund balance. My first inclination is always, where can we find this within current budgets? What, what can departments, you know, I'm not asking departments to cut, but some things, there are always, always timing issues. There's timing issues, there's cost savings. You know, you can go and book a flight and you might estimate $1,000 and it might come in at 400. This is the same with, we get cost estimates 18 months in advance sometimes when we're budgeting. And so even though we understand that the original purpose for most of these funds was not council's intent, we, that's why it comes to council for approval back because we understand this is now us asking permission to reallocate these funds to this project instead of the previous project that we allocated the funds to. So I, I understand where you're coming from, but it is always a timing issue. Right now, we're in the middle of 2026 budget. But this time next year, this thing, same thing could happen, something, an emergency could happen. My first inclination is never going to be contingency or fund balance. It's where we can find it within current budgets.
And I appreciate that, Rayland. I just, I, I'm concerned, Fire's not here. I had a conversation with Deputy Chief Shoup today and, and the police chief is still here. We're, we're cutting the training budget in half this coming year for a department in the city that keeps us out of consent decree, that keeps us out of lawsuits, that keeps our police officers safe, that keeps our community safer because our police officers are better trained. And I could go through the fire department concerns as well, but I see the chief sitting back there. And so my only concern is, are we spending the money responsibly in a difficult budget year, especially when, and I, you know, I, I appreciate the parks, the, sorry, the planning and zoning portion makes perfect sense to me. This is a good fit for what was budgeted intended for that $10,000. But is, is this the right fit for money that otherwise would be general fund? I don't know that we could take public works funds and, and use it for that, and I'm not, I'm not sure how this fits into public works funds to use it in this way. But the, these are my concerns, and I've said enough now, but this is, this is why I ask for it to be discussed, because I think it should be public. And I think this council needs to be fully aware of what it is we're being asked to vote on today by way of, if we do share your responsibility.
Thank you. Council Dentber.
Yes, I have a couple of different questions, and I guess my question will first start with Robin, and then maybe head over to Oscar, and then maybe finish up with you, Rayland, so you got a little bit of a reprieve. So, so Robin, we talked about this, this extension of Mr. Brooks services to Destination Caldwell and his efforts, and the downtown master plan. And so we've kind of equated them the same, like two equals two and three equals three. What sort of a process would planning and zoning go through for a downtown master plan? And would that planning process and would that notification process be identical to the process that Mr. Brooks would go through?
Mayor and Councilman Dentber, I don't, I don't know that ours would be identical to the way this happened. We typically, when we're doing our master plans, we would create a request for proposals and go out for a proposal. It wouldn't have to be a formal proposal because it's, we only budgeted $50,000, but we would typically go out and have people submit proposals to us to score and select from.
So then is it fair to say that by going down this path of approving this for Mr. Brooks, we would have bypassed additional processes that the city would have gone through through transparency?
Mayor and Councilman Dentber, I guess I would say that would be the process that planning and zoning would go through. I don't know if there are other departments that have went through this type of process. We've just always done it that way because we're not as familiar with the consulting firms, and so we want to see what their expertise is in prior projects that they've done.
Oscar, you're up. Ready?
So I read the agreement, and I see that the city is going to contribute $75,500 first, and then no sooner or no later than 90 days, we're going to commit another $75,000 second. And then we say, we wash our hands from there. If the plan's done, it's done. If it's not done, it's none of our responsibility. What happens if the $50,000 doesn't materialize, or the $10,000 doesn't materialize?
Mayor, Councilman, I, I suppose that there, there are some remedies that we have, but we're counting on the partnership that we have with the, with the, with the two other entities that are there, feeling that they'll, they'll come up with success. I think there was something in there, too, if, if there is not monies that are contributed from the community, there were some contingencies there to be able to handle that as well.
So is there any way that we can say the first $57,500 goes into it, and then upon successful contribution by Destination Caldwell and successful contribution from the community, the city will finish up with the $57,500?
Yes, that, that's certainly a possibility. This, this is the way I understood that the, the parties wanted it structured, but it can, that was, that was an option of what was going in the drafting, but that could be changed as well.
Okay. Then I, and then when there is an opportunity, somebody from the, from the Roger Brooks group, I have, I have some questions for them also. So if you want to have them come up, if not, I'm willing to stand by questions concluded.
Okay. Yeah, we'll have some come up and speak as well. Council Stotick.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Rayland, nothing really for you, just comments. You know, we talk about lack of services and lack of money, and we just approved another subdivision. We've got, last numbers I saw, over 9,000 projects that haven't been built yet, and we're arguing over something that, when you look at the past, what Mr. Brooks has done for this community regarding the Indian Creek, and what a few of the downtown businessmen had in their vision, which was correct, I mean, this is, this is nothing compared to that. But yet, again, we're arguing to point over a little bit of money that could go a long way in not only helping the city grow more in the right places, but also it could help urban renewal do a better job of planning also. When you look at the Tillian project and all the other projects that they've had, and again, I'm trying to be as kind as I can, but amendment upon amendment upon amendment, and we still didn't get what we originally asked for. And, you know, where do we draw the line here? I think that Mr. Brooks has been, and these businessmen have been the lifesaver of this, of this city in the past. And I think this particular project, what a little bit of money it's going to cost is going to be a, a good shot in the arm for the city of Caldwell in the future. And you look at the overruns of the swimming pool, over $3 million. You look at the, the parking meter debacle, $750,000, the impact fees that weren't collected, over $1.2 million. And we're talking about a little bit of money like that. What about the stewardship of these other projects that maybe the money would have been available? So I think we need to get smart here and not talk with a forked tongue, because every subdivision that we approve is going to demand services which we don't have in the future. And that's pretty obvious based on Mr. Hogaboom's calculations, and I think they're right from the county clerk, that five to 10 years, we're going to have to start developing more to pay for what we just approved. So anyway, thank you.
Council Register.
Yeah, so I was, I agree with Council Stotick. I, I find it interesting that we're arguing over this amount of money as well, especially when we hear all year long that you're the expert, and you've got it worked out, and we have to put our trust in you, and that's exactly what we're doing, except for when we have a difference of opinion, then suddenly we have to question where all the money's coming from, and maybe you're not the expert anymore. So the other thing that kind of, not, I'm not saying that, obviously, I believe that you have it worked out, and that you've got a place where the money's coming from, and that's where it's supposed to be. But I agree that if the city had had the kind of guidance that they need, we wouldn't have a hotel here, and a hotel there, and a parking meter over here, and we probably wouldn't have had to pay out $165,000 or $75,000 in parking meter fees. And if this is 115, we already would be ahead $50,000 if we just had the guidance that we needed from somebody like Roger Brooks, especially if we put in an urban renewal project. They are going to need some help and guidance to make sure that it does exactly what it's supposed to do. But like Council Stotick said, we keep making all these approvals for all of these subdivisions, and then we question investing in our community. We're okay with all these people coming from Eagle, like the last group just said, well, you can get a bond for schools if you have to. Like, we're okay with that, but we're not okay with just saying, hey, we're going to take a little bit of money that the finance director has figured out and reinvested into our community. It's just kind of odd to me. So that's where I stand with it.
Council Allgood.
I've got an easy question for you, Rayland. This is just in a matter of transparency. So I want to make sure the public is not, has a clear understanding of what we're talking about. We're going into budget season, we know it's going to be a difficult budget season. We're asking, we're asking our departments to make some cuts and, and, and to kind of scale back a little bit. But the money being discussed tonight is in the current budget, not what we're going into the budget season about. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. Is that correct?
That is correct. It is in the current budget. It's not going to add to the budget or ask for a budget amendment later down the road.
Okay, that's what I was after. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. So as mentioned, for this is a resolution, however, I think it would be good to hear from a few members in the audience. Mr. Palmer, do you mind kicking, or sorry, Rob, go right ahead. If you could just state your name for the record on that, and then time is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rob Pilot, 1102 Arthur here in Caldwell, and I can tag team the chamber director if need be, so just chime in if you would. I appreciate your comments. I think this was a good move to pull it off the consent counter so we could have further discussion about it. I don't want to repeat anything, but I will say that to the point on the RFQ, all you have to do is walk out the door to see Roger's qualifications. So I'm not sure why we need to reinvent the wheel when we know that we have a proven successful track record with Mr. Brooks here in our own community. The MOU has, has been put together and is ready for your approval. We have asked Roger to hold a time slot for us as of June 12th, which aligns with the Prime on the Plaza event, so that we can get him here and get him immediately immersed in the community and start getting feedback about where we take Caldwell next. If you'll indulge me, the analogy that I keep coming up with is, is how you try and differentiate spending and investing, and I think Councilman Register's touched on the investing a little bit. Roger's an investment in this community, and if you think of the tax base as a well that our community draws on to function, we lower a bucket into that well for the things that you have to deal with in the budget process, data, say, services like salaries, infrastructure, operations. But if we keep drawing on that well without planning for the future, it can run dry, as I think you may be seeing with some of your budget restraints now. Bringing Roger back is about trying to deepen that well for this community. He's planning a stronger, more sustainable future and, and long-term prosperity. So it's important that we draw from the well every day, and it's necessary, but we must also keep digging. One sustains today, and the other builds tomorrow. And if you have any doubts about Roger's ability to, ability to deepen our well, I did a little homework, and I pulled some assessment data from downtown, and I just picked a few random properties. In 2017, before Roger came to town, 724 Main Street, known as the Harmon Building, was assessed at $196,000. The 2024 assessment was $1.313 million for a 570% increase in assessed value. 712 Main, the Mesquite's Creek Building, in 2017, pre-plaza, $101,000. 2024, $910,000, an 802% increase in assessed values. 120 South 7th, that's Vern's Tavern, has little, has had little done to it, but yet in 2017, its assessment was $124,900. Today's assessment, $854,000, a 584% increase in assessed values. I have a few others, but I would just say that by comparison, I pulled a few samples from outside of Roger's original area of influence, just to get some perspective on Roger's influence on the downtown district as opposed to outside. 715 Albany is the A-Gem Building. In 2017, it was $336,000, and today it's $645,000, which is a 76% increase. 1424 East Chicago, the Machine Shop, 2017 assessment, $111,000, today, $245,000. That was the largest on my data draw, and that was 121%. So if you look at Roger's original work in the downtown district, we have 570% increase, 802, 584, et cetera. So Roger's influence has had an impact on the downtown, and I hope that we can recognize that it's time to start planning for tomorrow with Roger's input on what happens next in this community. So I'd stand for any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pilot. Appreciate that. Any questions? Council Dentber.
Rob, I appreciate you. You always do a great job with the numbers, and I appreciate you bringing the numbers. You know, this is going to be a, a, a big question. There might be three or four questions.
I do my best.
And I, I appreciate what Roger Brooks did. I look at the plaza, there is nothing that I regret about having Roger Brooks come in here, and nothing at all that I regret. But there's this huge elephant in the room, right? And that was, we were accused by vast portion of this community that we were corrupt, we were taking this city in the wrong direction, that we did not have the city's best interest at heart, and that we needed to stop the growth, we needed to stop the building, we needed to stop everything, just completely stop it. So is there any chance that Roger Brooks will be reaching out to this group of people who thinks that this city is heading in the wrong direction, and will they be able to build the bridge that you guys are promising?
Well, I certainly can't speak for Roger. I will say that my recollection of his past experience with Caldwell is the first thing he does is engage with the community. He held meetings at College of Idaho, and it was open to the public. He reached out to stakeholders like the county, and the rodeo, and anyone who was willing to participate. I mean, the world is run by those who show up. So all he can do is open the door and get them to come and tell them they're welcome, and then build, build from there. I don't think that it's fair to say that Roger's coming in with a pro-growth attitude, and this is just my opinion. I think Roger's coming in to help us with a plan. I just, I don't know where we're going to be in five years or 10 years, and we need some expertise to help guide us. And I, I certainly may not agree with everything that Roger suggests, and, but that's not my place. I'm just here to get Roger here because we need to help. That's it. So.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Travis, do you want to add anything, or anybody else? So?
Just, were there any questions that were unanswered?
Any questions that anybody wants to ask of Mr. Palmer or anybody else? It's, okay, I don't see any, so very good. Okay, Robbie Nell that looks like, so appreciate that very much. And for everybody else that's here, thank you so much for that. Again, this is a resolution, we don't need to close the public testimony. But with that, it would be turned over to council again for your discussion, for any motions. And then, of course, Councilor Register.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the execution of the Roger Brooks memorandum of understanding with the Caldwell Chamber of Commerce and the amount of $115,000 as accompanied in the FY 2025 budget.
Second.
That's a motion from Council Register, with a second from Council Stotick. Again, this is for approval of the resolution as described. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, I don't see any. So with that, voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast, so voting is closed, and that motion passes with five in favor, one in opposition. Again, those at home that maybe cannot see, Council Williams did vote in opposition, opposition of the motion with the other five council members voting in favor. So that does pass, the resolution is approved, and it's time to move forward. So please let Mr. Brooks know, and be excited to have him in town again to continue the great work that he started, and all the amazing things that have been happening in the downtown. So, and thank you for so many people, I can't name you all, because there's so many that have had such an integral part of the downtown and moving this forward and working to get us to this point. Some of you for nearly 10 years now, probably close to a decade, and it shows, it's just phenomenal, just what is going on in the downtown and just how we are looked at today compared to the past, that we are truly that gem of the, of the valley. So thank you so much for all that work and effort you put into that. So with that, moves us on to our action item number two under new business, and this is for bill number 43, ordinance number 3695, amending the Caldwell City Code. So with that, Robin, it is all you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Robin Collins, Community Development Director, City of Caldwell. As you're probably aware, not too long ago, we came before you for an ordinance to create a downtown parking advisory board. We are still working on that. We've finally have probably enough members as of just this week to bring that back to you at the next council meeting. However, we also recognize that even if we got them on board within the next couple of weeks, it's going to take them some time to evaluate the situation, do some public outreach. So in the meantime, we have brought before you an ordinance for the parking regulations to, some of it's cleanup of some issues that we're having with just parking regulations as far as parking tickets and those types of things. as far as parking tickets and those types of things. Some of it is removing any reference to an outside parking management company or paid parking fees in the downtown for transparency to make the community more comfortable, knowing that's not in our ordinances anymore. But we are asking to add back in the three-hour parking time limit in just the city center area. The reason we're doing that now is we've had a lot of complaints from downtown businesses about the parking turnover not happening and a lot of employees parking on the public streets. So, that is why we're here today to bring that back to council to ask for that three-hour parking just on street. All the parking lots in downtown, we're proposing to still be completely free. It would just be for the on-street in front of the businesses. The proposed timeframe we are proposing is seven days a week, Monday through Sunday, nine to five. So, all the events that happen in the evening, everything would not be impacted by that three-hour time limit. It would just be during the day, those main business hours for businesses to get customers in for lunch or whatever. The reason we went with three hours is talking with some businesses and saying that, hey, people come in, they might want to shop, they might want to do lunch, and then they might want to go to a movie. So, at first, we were going to do four hours and then we're like, well, maybe that's a little bit too long. So, maybe we'll start off with three. But again, once the Parking Advisory Commission gets up and running, I'm sure they'll be back with a recommendation and this whole thing could potentially change again. But we'd like to have something in downtown to help the business owners just for now until we get that in place. And I think that's the only thing we changed, other than just, like I said, doing some cleanup for our parking tickets for more clarity for when we are issuing tickets. But I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, Robin. Appreciate that. Counselor Register.
Yeah, one thing that came up before when we had the meters was that three hours just wasn't long enough. So, I would like to see something a little bit longer. The idea of lunch or dinner and a movie within three hours is not really all that feasible, especially if you're walking around. And then, it started, people were saying that it felt like we were discouraging people from coming downtown by making them leave. And then, the other thing I read a lot about in mom groups was that they wanted to come down to splash pads and then go to lunch and then maybe go back to the splash pad or walk around the creek. And three hours was not long enough. So, I would like to see at least four hours, if that's the case, while your parking committee gets up and maybe tiered parking after that. So, maybe shorter times on the downtown and longer times as we go out so that, you know, it frees up some of those spots. But I do see the importance in this, especially if people from the apartments are not parking in their lot or whatever, keeping people moving in and out. But I'd like to see at least four, just from some of the feedback that we got before. And also, when I had my own little parking committee, that was another thing that came up too, was at least four hours.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor, all good.
I like it just the way it is. I think it's a good start and completely understanding that much of it could change once we have our advisory committee and they, I'm very good with it the way it is. One question that maybe will get addressed as your committee gets on, some places have a reserved parking spot for picking up. You know, you can park for 15 minutes here or there. I don't know whether those are official or made by just the place that put up the sign. But that's something I would love to have formalized one way or the other in the future. Are those official 15-minute parking places or is that something that we just, you know, randomly did?
Mayor and Councilman Allgood, that's a great question. And in this ordinance, there is additional language in there to allow the Public Works Director to have the authority to designate those spots for, I believe we limited it to 10 minutes or 15 minutes. I can't remember what we put in here. Let me look. We limited it to 10 minutes. And what we did on here, because we do recognize that there has been some businesses downtown where they've requested loading and unloading zones and they're directly in front of their businesses. And that has made other businesses slightly upset. We put some language in here that says, "Such zones shall be located to serve multiple businesses within a block and should not be installed to serve only one single business." So, as those requests come before the Public Works Director, he can take those into account and where's the best central location on that block to install those loading and unloading zones. So, that is part of this amendment package.
Perfect, yeah. And I just, I didn't know whether these businesses were applying somewhere to get a spot, you know, like a restaurant or whatever. But anyway, I just, as we move forward, it sounds like it already is and we're formalizing that in some fashion. So, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Counselor Stodak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Robin, I don't, probably a question for the police chief, but we've been talking about services and how we could accommodate. Do we have people on the police force that can police this if we have a timetable? Have you talked to them at all?
Mayor and Councilman Stodak, let me answer that real quick. And then, if Chief wants to jump in, that'd be great. Currently, right now, we have one full-time parking officer. We also have a part-time 18-hour parking officer. In the new budget, we will be requesting another full-time parking officer with the goal to have a full-time position dedicated to just downtown.
I see.
And that's within the planning and zoning department, so we don't have to use a sworn officer to help her doing that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Chief.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Stodak, just to add what Robin said, we also have CSO positions that we're filling currently, which are non-sworn positions that will supplement the planning and zoning staff. But I just want to say for the record that our department is working very close with Robin's people and it's never been better. So.
Thank you so much, Chief. Appreciate that. Counselor Doty.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to sponsor bill number 43, ordinance 3695, with a request to move for its passage by title only and approve the summary for publication.
Okay, so that is a motion for adoption of bill number 43, ordinance number 3695. Do we have a second? This is a motion from Counsel Doty and a second from Counsel Williams. Discussion on that motion, Counselor Register.
So, that's what the three-hour parking, right?
I believe so, correct.
Because we did, just as a reminder, we did a survey when I had the group that, before it was dismantled. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, obviously, but there was like 250 responses that did not want the three-hour parking, that they wanted at least four. They didn't want to feel like they were discouraged and the businesses did not want to feel like they had to, that they were discouraging people from coming and staying downtown, spending money, time and all that kind of stuff. So, if that's built in there, then I have to be a no because four hours would have been more appropriate, in my opinion.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, with that, then voting is open at this time. And all votes are cast. The voting is closed. And that motion passes with five in favor, one in opposition. So, Counsel Register did vote in opposition and the other five counselors in favor. So, that does pass. So, that moves us into item number three, which is Finance Report.
You're June.
I saw fingers come both ways.
I thought you were June.
Well, I am June. I just.
Counselors all good.
What about the dog?
I moved an accounts payable in the amount of $2,991,465.64, represented by check number 25868 through 186202, electronic payments and payroll in the amount of $709,177.84, represented by check numbers 39940 through 39967, and direct deposits accepted, payments approved and vouchers filed in the office.
Didn't even notice. I think we're good. I think we're good. So, we have a motion to accept the finance report as described and a second from Counsel Stodak. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. And that moves us into council comments. Counselor Doty.
Mr. Mayor, how are you?
I am good.
Good. So, in the interest of transparency, which we talked a little bit about tonight, first, I want to say it's good that you did meet with the businesses in the morning. This council's been asking, I think, for you to do that for quite some time. My concern is why council wasn't notified or involved. And that way, we can all be a part of the community, hear what the businesses have to say firsthand. And since we were asking for it, why, why in the interest of transparency, wouldn't we be involved in that meeting? Once again, I had to hear that from a downtown business and not from the mayor's office. So, I'm just curious on that.
So, do you want me to answer that now or give my comments on that?
Sure. I guess you can choose, but if you want to answer it now, we're in two minutes or five minutes.
So, I can. So, we have established a number of roundtable meetings with different entities. So, this came up. The idea actually was from visits that Mr. Jenkins and I had down into Texas when we were visiting with those cities. They did something similar of this nature. So, we've implemented that. So, we did, we had one last month with the home builders to learn, to listen to them.
Which we weren't invited to either.
On that. And so, the reason for that, so if you wish to come, you're more than welcome. It's focused on those with staff. So, city staff is attending those. So, today, Ophelia Morales was there for city staff as well as Haley. And so, that's kind of the focus is for that, those individuals, those business owners, the developers, whoever it is, to be able to discuss issues that they're dealing with so that staff can handle those and make those changes, you know, effectively. Obviously, if we do include the council, then those become public agenda meetings. These are more informal meetings with staff, with those individuals associated with those different groups to get that feedback and then to implement those changes to just make it a better, smoother process in that regards.
So, it's a better, smoother process if your council does not attend? Is that what you're saying?
No, that is not what I'm saying. So, we are making those changes. So, as you're aware, so the council is, as tonight, making those decisions regarding budget, regarding land use cases. There's very, there's chances of those things being discussed, which would not be appropriate for a full council to be there to discuss that at an unagenda meeting. These are informal meetings to make policy changes, which does not require the council's approval on that. That is, and again, it's not to bypass the council in any way, but just to get the feedback from these organizations and see what can we do as a staff to do a better job in implementing the policies and procedures of the city.
And I understand what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, and I'll just make one final comment on it. It's easy to post it so that we can all attend or we can all sit and not say a word about whatever the discussion is. I just think it'd be good that your council also hears that firsthand of the problems or issues or the positive things as well so that we can help you move the city forward in whatever manner that our citizens and yourself thinks is best. So, thank you.
Counselor Stodak.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to extend what we were talking about there. I was blindsided too a little bit this morning because I had some contact too with some downtown businesses and saying, why aren't you here? And didn't know what to say. So, anyway, thank you.
Me too. I'm just throwing it out there, a couple of businesses also wondering where we were and it makes it look like we're not engaged or invested. And so, you have that feedback now. And then, I just also was wondering if we could get an update on your discussions about the shelter. I know you had, I think you had some meetings at least. And you can do that one at the end of this. And then, I'm sure most of you know that Caldwell School District has eliminated two of their big positions due to budget cuts. The Director of Student Safety as well as the Career Technical Education position. And these were, again, supposedly taken away due to budget cuts. And I think we have to keep this in mind as we're doing all of this building, as we just saw when a developer comes in. And this was a different school district, obviously, but says, well, you can get a bond if you need to deal with the schools. So, we need to just kind of keep this stuff in mind and not put it back on the taxpayer because I think that student safety is important and I think that the career technical education is important. And now that those are gone, we're taking away from those kids that, especially the career technical education where they could have earned a degree. I know that Anita Wilson was doing a lot of the work on the grants and finding the way to pay for that even without the title. And then, now the position's gone, so who's going to do it? Nobody knows. So, this growth and the strain that it puts on our schools and everything else does affect everybody from the taxpayer all the way down to the students. So, I hope that we just keep that in mind as we move forward and get some good numbers or have those conversations that I've been asking for about state codes to see what we can do to make it better for our community.
Very good. Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I'm sure you're aware, and many other people are aware, June 2nd at 5:00 PM, a process ended that is part of our democratic process. And I appreciate and respect the way those processes work and that the community has had an opportunity to express their interest in city government. I would especially like to express thanks for the support of many, many people that reached out and were unwilling to be vocal because of the perhaps negative impact it would create for their businesses or their livelihoods if social media were to lay hold of them. But I'm grateful for the support of this community and as we make decisions that we believe are best for Caldwell, we trust that indeed they are. After volunteering for this, to this community for nearly 18 years and raising my family here, I am grieved and concerned that anybody would question my integrity. I will tell you for fact, I have not been bribed by anyone, have never received a kickback and don't have a padded bank account. I think it's important for us to turn the page and really begin to focus on some of the positives. There's so much that seems to be tearing this community apart. Either last month or the month before, the Inferno Soccer Club hosted the Northwest Regional Soccer Tournament here in the City of Caldwell. And there were thousands of people at Brothers and Sisters Park. Just over a week ago, the Gem State BMX Nationals was hosted here in the City of Caldwell. Again, there were thousands of people that came to the beautiful city of Caldwell to experience life here. We talked to some people down there. I walked around. People that were spending the night there, camping down there, eating here. It's so good that people want to come to Caldwell. And there are fantastic things going on in this community. That same weekend, Amano had their official ribbon cutting. And we have a nominee for the James Beard Award again in Sal and the work that they're doing there in Caldwell. We have so many, and I'm just beginning to scratch the surface. People are moving here because they want to move here. And Ray Lynn will tell you, if we stop saying, if we start saying no, and you correct me if I'm wrong because you're sitting there, if we start saying no to developments, if they don't continue at the pace they are, we may have to lay off firefighters next year because the growth is paying for growth. And so, decisions are being made based on that growth. And so, those decisions that are being made and have been made would have to be undone. I'm just thankful that people love Caldwell enough that they want to live here, are choosing to move here, are investing in our community. The quarters are looking great. I'm taking too long, but I want to celebrate Caldwell. I want to say one final thing and I could say something about all of my colleagues up here that I admire and respect. I especially want to give a shout out to the gentleman sitting to my left, even though his microphone wasn't on a minute ago. He has given 40 years to this city, longer than that because he's from here. This gentleman, Chris Allgood, a lifelong police officer who served as the chief of police. He doesn't deserve the disrespect, the questioning of his integrity that he has gone through. And I want to personally thank him for his service to our community. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Counselor Allgood.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And, yeah, wow, thank you. Just a brief bit on what Counselor Doty started with. I believe it adds additional sensitivity that the council is not present. Because it's an election year, we have a number of council members that need to be engaged and weren't invited.
engaged and weren't invited to that. And an election year adds a perception that there could be, that there's an issue. And I think that, I think it's just more transparent that when there's meetings, we all know that there's a meeting. Changing to a more positive subject, the cemetery over Memorial Day. Wow. What a wonderful event. What a wonderful look for that cemetery. Is it the scouts that put up the flags?
I, Debbie?
Disabled veteran veterans and the scouts.
Wow. I, it just, my family's buried there. My father, my uncle are veterans. They had flags, all the flags up there. It was just amazing. The work that our clerk, Debbie Guyer, did to kick off that event, those are the things, those are the reasons we live here is because we do those kind of things. And I just want to say thank you again, Debbie.
Counselor Denver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always nice to back clean up. So first of all, Caldwell's a great community. It's one of the fastest-growing cities in the nation. It's the fastest-growing city in the state. People want to come here, people want to live here, they want to build here, they want to make Caldwell their home. We see this over and over again, every single week and every single day. We meet new people and we see the enthusiasm and the great opportunities that there are in this city. And I want to thank all the city staff for their hard work. We have new city staff that is coming on and we'll have some, you know, some wholesale changes in our department heads, but they have the vision and hopefully they will be instrumental in leading this city forward. One of the things that's been on my mind a lot lately, and we probably ought to address it sooner rather than later, and that is some sort of a corridor beautification ordinance. I got to tell you, if you drive down Cleveland and Blaine, I'm impressed with some of the houses and then I'm mortified by some of the houses that have weeds growing. I think we ought to have a corridor beautification ordinance that includes Kimball, 10th, Blaine, Cleveland and a bunch of other streets that we just ask people to clean up your place. It's not hard to mow your lawn. It's really not hard. And finally, I want to say that I appreciate the kind words and the words of support from the community over the last several weeks during this recall. Because those of you I meet on the street were kind and gentle and were supportive. The cowards hid behind social media and they said mean and nasty things, and that's all they were, is cowards. And I'm going to quote from our good friend here, Bob, Rob Pilot, who said Roger Brooks comes with receipts. And just the community should know that Mr. Hollis, in his efforts to recall these great men up here, came with no receipts. He didn't even turn in his signatures, which is another cowardice act. And so we should know that the person that still holds the title for being the last recalled person on city council is our esteemed state legislature, Kent Marmen. He still holds the title as the last person recalled in this community. Now, it's time to put all this behind us and it's time to move forward and it's time for everybody out there who has a vision, who has dreams and who thinks Caldwell is still yet to be a great place to come together. And I appreciate everyone.
Okay. Thank you. So just real quick, a couple of things to make sure you're aware of. So Family Fun Day is this Saturday. That is at, I forget the name of the park over by the library, Seabury Park. So that's at Seabury Park. That's at 10:00 AM this Saturday. So just make sure you all are aware of that. And then it is still a little ways off, but just where, 4th of July, we'll be here before we know it. So we're very excited for that. So we'll have the traditional parade, the events at Memorial Park, then obviously the fireworks display, and we're very excited for that. Actually, I had a meeting today on site with the gentleman that'll be shooting them off as well as Juan Avila and a few other staff. Our fire department as well was there just to make sure that we got that all planned and ready to move forward in a safe and very fun manner. So we're super excited for that. So it should be fantastic this year. And then also, just for your, to be aware, for the council, email that I did receive today from a Mr. Will Anderson, and that name may be self-familiar, I know that he'd been, I can't remember if it was the whole council or it's just me and you, where he had the thoughts and proposals about extending down to, in that regard. So he had a request to consider in regards, said that Roger Brooks, that he also taking into account the Caldwell Event Center on that. So I told him that I would bring that up. I told him that it's pretty far down the process right now, but we could always do an addendum in the future if we want to look at that. So we'll make sure to mention that to Roger as well to take that into consideration on that. So that is all that I had. So that ends us for this evening. So with that,